Hi, this is the regular monthly meeting of the Dayton Development and Industrial Commission. I have six oh five. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the town YouTube channel. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair and may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. To join those Zoom meeting, meeting ID is eight three three eight nine three three one four nine five. Passcode seven five seven zero five seven. Join by phone at one three zero nine two zero five three three two five. If you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item under new business is Discuss Review Act on any new business interests in town. So there are actually three that I'm aware of, possibly four. One is a new business called Nick's Trailer Service and More. It's carpentry work, but what he also does is he takes old trailers, whether they be horse trailers, campers, whatever. Completely refurbishes them, sometimes for a different purpose, and then resells them. The second one is Haney Woodworking and Carpentry, general carpentry. The third one is called Simply Printables. They're an online graphics firm. I believe all of these are actually home-based. And there's a fourth one that I happened to reach out to. I just saw. Her on Facebook, she said, hi folks, I'm relocating from Taunton to Dayton. Please continue to, you know, reach out to us and work with us. So. I assume at some point she's going to go into the town clerk's office for a business certificate. So I was just waiting a little bit to see if that happens, but if not, I'll reach out to her and just welcome her to town and. I can't, I didn't write down the name. I don't recall the name off the top of my head, but it's a massage and body works. And then the last, this is not new business, but for those who aren't not aware, Shaw's Boatyard was sold at the beginning of the month. So the new owners are from Berkeley. It's four parties, Bob and Nicole Mangion. And also Brendan and Aaron Lund of Berkeley. I don't know if anybody in the committee knows any of them. My understanding is that Bob and Nicole Mangion own a lot of Dunkin' Donuts stores in Somerset. And then I heard. I wasn't able to verify, but Brendan and Aaron Lund apparently own a floating restaurant someplace in the area. So whether they have ideas along such lines more far down the road, you know, Shaw's Boatyard, no. But that would be interesting. Does anybody else know of any new businesses opening up or?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Well, we had the. Was it E and L?
E and L finally opened up. Yeah. So they had their grand opening. Last weekend. I know John's there, Lenny was there, the selectmen, myself. So it was pretty well attended. So. It was actually, they had a soft opening prior to that, a few weeks before that, I believe, but. Under Old Business Discuss Review Act on the Drone Videography Project. So I had sent, after our last meeting, I sent a letter to the Selectmen's Office asking for permission to do the drone videography. And their reply was, you know, they agreed, but that request that we get. Signed release forms from anybody, particularly. Know that might be a customer that accidentally gets picked up or just generally get their consent. Cause I had been planning to do it verbally, but they said, please, you know, get signed releases. So I did draft a release form that I shared with Mike Mullen. He reviewed it. He thought it was fine. So I've started using that. And I advised Joy Brooks of Pinnacle Drone Works that based upon the Selectman's feedback. She can go ahead and get started at the town hall campus. Also at the boat ramp at Osprey Landing in town. Arujos did sign, so. And they hadn't, they were like, you know, there, we have a couple of sites in town, so we'll talk to her and see what she's really, what kind of things she, she may not want to do something that has. Solar farm in the background, for example, so maybe we can point her to some other plot of land in town, but. But they've agreed to work with her. So Joy has their information. Bristol County Agriculture High School, I met with them last Thursday because they had some concerns mainly, they just wanted to make sure that. You know, they said, no way can we get a student picked up on that drone, you know, we just, so I said, you know. She's willing to work around their schedule. So she can do the middle of the summer, she can do weekends, you know, all of which would minimize that. They can review it after it's done because it's just raw footage that we're going to be getting back. See if there's anything that needs to be edited out. So they seemed amenable and I gave them a copy of the waiver, but I think he just has to run it up the, the flagpole and. Make sure no one can get signatures back. Under those that are pending, I know Paul, you had said your aunt would be interested. I don't.
I did send her the release. I'll double check to see if she's signed or returned it. I don't think she has, so I'll, I'll reach out and.
Okay. We talked about Mannheim, New England, and I did talk to Dave Pralucci, the general manager there. He said he actually does not have permission to authorize that. He has to check with corporate headquarters. And I believe Mannheim is actually international, so those, those headquarters may be overseas even, but. Or maybe there's an American headquarters, but he said he would check and, and then let me know. I did leave messages for Michael Joyce, who's the general manager at Dayton Power. I've not heard back from him, so I had to follow up. I left a message for Kobe Evans, who's one of the partners at Pure Oasis, the mill on Spring Street. I've not heard back from him either. So again, I have to follow up. And I tried leaving messages for the new owners of Shaw's, but the contact number I have, which is for Bob Mangion. His mailbox is always full, so I haven't had much success in reaching him, so I just have to keep plugging it way at that. The other place we had wanted to do something was on County Street, like the quarter mile, third of a mile section from County Street down to Maine, when we have businesses on both sides. But with the caveat of us getting release forms, I know from. John and I visiting that area when we were, you know, recruiting people for the first networking event. Plus my visiting it when I was trying to get people to sign up for the online business directory. It's very hard to get in front of the right person. You know, there's a store clerk, but they're not the manager and you leave it and. The idea that we're going to get signed consent forms for every one of those businesses that could potentially get picked up on a drone. I think is kind of slim. So we might want to have a fallback about someplace else in town that we want to, you know, target. We can't really manage that. I don't know, people have other thoughts, but. And we don't have to decide tonight, but.
I guess one question I have, Dan, is what, what is the town looking for on the releases? Because. You know, I mean, if they're going to just like put the drone down County Street and, you know, just kind of like zoom by. What would be the issue there? I guess, you know, I mean, right, it's almost undue. Pressure for you to try to get released for everybody along that, that, you know, street.
Yeah, I mean, Lenny's here, he was there at that meeting, but nonetheless, you know, that is the request. I mean, you just want to be covered so that no one can come back to the town and say. Why are you releasing my image on, you know. Your new site, on your marketing material. I never gave consent for that. And I don't think so much the building as, or maybe it's partly that, but it's. Somebody you might have captured inadvertently, you know, that was present, but.
Another department was going to be doing some drone work. And it became a concern with many people in the community about. The perception of an invasion of privacy. FAA does have certain guidelines and restrictions. About what can and can't be done in the public domain. So I'm not exactly sure how far you can go. But at least trying to get permission shows care and concern for the individual rather than government. Just doing their thing, which turns off a lot of people. As Sweet and Old.
We did not, that was on our, we, we targeted 10. Because with our budget and with Joyce's capacity, that was kind of the number we arrived in sites.
And I was just wondering, is it a backup in case?
Oh, okay. We can, I'm afraid we're getting more into the. Nature and beauty of the town, which is great, but I'd like to have, make sure we have good representation of the businesses that are in town. So that people look at it and see. I see a factory, I see industry, I see a big farm, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Right, right. And I, I do agree. I am, I, I do kind of echo the sentiment that we've all had, that, um, obviously in a public space, there is no expectation of privacy. And the town already uses drone photography. We use it, we have near map subscriptions that we use. Processing, I have it for text collection. So it is something that is actively in, in use in the town. But I do understand that. That, you know, we want to, as a sign of respect to the community, to get the waiver signed. But I, I do kind of echo, echo what John said earlier, that, that. I understand that that's a request, maybe could we. If there are any areas where we're, would like to use the photography, but aren't able to reach a decision maker. Could we perhaps, maybe if we do end up in that situation, take that to the Board of Selectmen on a case-by-case basis to see if they'd have a comfort level with, at a certain height. Or like, for example, you know, we did the touch a truck the other day and we took pictures there, but surely, you know, if the town wanted to send up pictures of the touch a truck or people there, we wouldn't want to obtain, you know, releases from. Everybody that attends, you know.
I remember Tim Aguirre was particularly adamant that you must have a release when, at the Selectman's meeting, he spoke up. So I don't know what, what he's coming from in terms of that, maybe past experience or something, but. One place we had not thought of about putting the drone and maybe we'd give a good substitute. I don't know who we'd need permission from exactly is, you know, Princess House. I don't actually know all the businesses in there. I've asked Jim a couple of times and he's like, oh, I'll get that to you, but. Is it just co-op and, you know, Interplex? I have no idea who's in all of those, you know, all that space. And, you know, that could again be like long list of people we need to get signatures from, or maybe we just need it from the property owner, but.
All right. A person that might be able to be of some help to you. Is Nicole Mello, because she works in that building on a daily basis. And Nicole's boss obviously said, Mike, he would know who the landlord is.
Okay, I'm pretty sure the landlord is overseas, correct? I'm pretty sure the landlord is in Europe.
Right, but the contact person, you know what I mean? Just to get an accurate list of businesses.
What do people think about Princess House as, it's not the prettiest place right now, to be honest, but it looks, it's impressive. I mean, in its size and, you know, the buildings that are there and. People think it has a long history.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Now, will you be. Putting editorial comment into this?
Someday. I mean, right now, we're just getting raw footage, so that we can do something down the road with that.
Add some history.
Right, yeah. Yeah, okay. All right. So I'll work, I'll, I'll reach back with Nicole and maybe with the CEO there. I have his contact information, I forget his name.
Mike.
Mike, yeah. If I'm trying to find out, you know, the owners of Princess House and. I'll check with Jim again to see if I can get a list of the occupants there. And then I'll keep working on, you know, Shaw's Boatyard and Dayton Power and Pure Oasis and see what Mannheim says.
Mrs. Goulart's here. The Assessors' Office, I would imagine, would have a tax rule, right? An address. Can you just share that information? We were wondering what businesses are in Princess House building and they would all pay taxes, correct? As a result.
Probably a better place would be the town clerk's office because they issued the business certificates.
I'd have access to everything that, I'm getting data dumps on a regular basis on those lines from.
If you get the names, obviously we can verify them. I mean. And so can the tax collector's office.
Okay.
But if you're looking for a place to stay, you've already contacted the town clerk because they would issue the business certificates.
So I don't have, he has no information about the occupants. So in his database.
The other thing is.
Oh, sorry, John.
I was just going to say, not every organization needs to file a business certificate if they are a corporation or something like that. So.
The assesses. You have the building, somebody owns the building, the property, the real estate. Internally, if there are businesses that have personal property. That we need to be aware of, then they would be taxed on personal property and somebody else would be taxed on. The building and the grounds and the real estate end of it. So.
I have actually been to the Assessors' asking that question. Can I get a list of all the personal property taxes in town? Because it is public information. They just have, they don't have the, anyone other than the property owners. Oh, and, you know. Interplex and Corporate Productions for that site. So they may be renters without property, you know, maybe they're storing, they could be storing cardboard boxes. There's no property tax, you know.
If you have manufacturing established, you have like the weaving shop.
Yeah.
That finishing, you had all that stuff. So that would be a little easier to. Track in the Assessors' Office. I had a question about, you're talking about drone service that you're going to hire.
We actually have already contracted with a student that John located at Bridgewater State who just completed drone certification and is starting up her own business. So she gave us a really good rate. And has made herself extremely flexible. So we actually have already.
If you're in the Princess House area, you've got Aquaria there also, if they would allow you, that, that's the.
That would be another possibility. I haven't actually, I don't know what it looks like from the ground or from the air, what Aquaria, but.
They're on our tax list.
Oh, yeah, they are, definitely.
The other thing I wanted to mention was you talked about Route 138, County Street. You got to be careful around the main street intersection. There's a childcare program there. So you can't have any filming there.
Yeah.
We, we ran into something at the Stormwater Committee. The Aggie school students used to check our outfalls along the Taunton River. That stopped because of COVID, but also because of change in administration several years ago. We asked if their drones could do that for us and that's not going to work either. So. It may have, checking outfalls on the Taunton River, we're not looking at people for the most part. We're inspecting the outfalls from the systems, looking for pollution and things like that. But I think it has something to do with the equipment and the grant that. Funded all that equipment over there. So it's just something to think about.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
While we're on the subject, you mentioned Aquaria. Would it be possible to do a tour of that facility?
I mean, I suppose we can get a contact and, and talk to them. I don't know that. So what, as a business, are they another, the licensed corporation? Are they like a quasi-governmental license corporation?
Apparently not.
No.
Apparently they're one of our top 10 biggest taxpayers.
Yes, that I knew.
Number four, five or six or more around there. The upper middle.
And I knew that. For a long time, they've been in need of some large investment in order for them to grow. Is that true?
Yes.
Particularly if they wanted to expand the services to other towns because they don't have a lot of clients right now.
Right.
City of Brockton, yes, but not a lot more than that. So I mean, yeah, I guess it's a topic for discussion about, you know. What is their future and, you know, what do they need in investments and how could this committee? You know, not that we have $10 million in our pocket, but it's just an understanding of one of the bigger businesses in town and what's going on with them. Okay, sure. I can reach out to see if Mike maybe can help me set that up.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, the thing with. They're kind of a mystery to many of us. What they do with the plant, how it evolves. As Mr. Reynolds said, they pay a lot of money. They contribute a great deal to this community.
I had actually had a conversation with Mike Mullen about what if. The city of Brockton ever decided to actually buy it because it may.
And it becomes municipal.
And it becomes municipal. And so Mike said, well, you know. There are some steps we can take to try to protect, you know, so we don't completely, it's not suddenly a nonprofit or municipal, that sort of thing, but. I think we're a little bit off topic, but, you know, those are all kinds of concerns around.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Aquaria.
I can tell you what I know about Aquaria from being a Selectman and having dealt with this issue. Obviously, it's, it's product is drinking water that it gets from the Taunton River. And its customer is the city of Brockton. And along that pipeline, all the way to Brockton, there are other communities. Who wanted to sign into it. And that seemed to go quiet for a while. That is active again. I was at an MMA meeting early in the year. At, I think Stonehill. And. I'm thinking Norton, not sure about Mansfield, but there were a number of communities that had representatives at that meeting. And they were asking about the status of them. Buying water from that pipeline. Now, when Brockton. Wasn't the initial customer, they were. Severely restricted in, in sources of water. So they, pipeline was built, they were getting water. Well, then they checked their system and found out they had major leaks, so they picked all the leaks. And then supposedly the amount of water they were drawing. Less was required, but at this MMA meeting that I was at, it was one of the legislative spring breakfast meetings. The, I think in Eastern is another community. And when they were talking about it, I said to them, they're probably one of the larger taxpayers in the town of Dayton. And obviously, the concern would be. If they're going to be generating more drinking water and selling it, that that's a taxable business. My understanding is from Mrs., the late Mrs. Borogad, who was on the Board of Assessors when the agreement. For the construction of that plant was negotiated. If they sell that plant to a, I'll call it nonprofit. Within a certain period of years, they still have to pay the taxes. That's part of the agreement. So that Dayton wouldn't just be left, no pun intended, high and dry. So the, the other thing about that plant is. Unlike Dayton Power, who had a TIP agreement. Tax incentive financing agreement. All Aquaria asked for was a designation, not an agreement. So each year, when it comes time to look at their taxes, we and Dayton Power, we have to. Every so many years, and I'm not sure exactly if it's three years or longer, but. We have to hire a firm that is specially trained to determine tax value on Dayton Power and Aquaria. And. This is, it's because the way you value those plants and the way they're taxed is not the run-of-the-mill. Real estate taxes and the kind of things that boards of assessors do. So we do have a special company that does that. So whether or not they go, I'll call it nonprofit. The potential for expansion was discussed a lot at that MMA meeting I was at. So that's, that's there too.
Good to know. Thank you. Just one thing about the, the drone is the monies that we had planned to use for that. Were a part of this year's funds, which technically would expire. We don't spend them, you know, come the next town meeting. Hopefully we'll get. Another year's funding, but I did talk to the town accountant. She gave me the. Paperwork to encumber them or carry them over next year. So we do have the $750 necessary for, you know, the 10 sites for drone videography. So it won't tap into next year's funding. So the next item on the topic is to Discuss Review Act, any advertising and sponsorship for the Second Annual Networking Event. Which is right now set for October 3rd, 2023 at 5:00 PM. We had, I had reached out. 5:00 PM, it's been corrected.
Okay.
Yeah, thank. So I had, at E and L. John was there and Chris from the area Chamber of Commerce was there and I just clarified with her. About when she would like us to start advertising with that because. They, they do have an online events calendar to sign up for, but it's not all the way out to October yet. So she said it was fine if we wanted to. Whether it's at the Cowchip Fest or, or whenever we want to start advertising it and just take names. Email addresses, all the information. She said she may stick a shell up there for people to sign up for, but for right now, you know, if we just want to do that. You know, and we are in a much better position this year because of the. Business Directory, you know, I now have a listing of. Really over 300 businesses in town with good email addresses, phone numbers, contacts. So that, our reaching out this year is going to be, I think, a lot more productive hopefully than it was last year. When John and I were just driving up and down the roads, knocking on doors.
Now, did you ever, does the Aggie have like tiers or anything like that for sponsorship? Is there like, you know, if you donate $150 and then you get red in the.
Yeah.
Banked or something like that?
That's a John question.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't know all the details on that, Paul, you know, real details. I know that we, last year. We had a number of sponsors that were banks and that sort of thing and they provided. You know, well, they contributed for all of the refreshments and that sort of thing. The DDIC was also a sponsor. And one of the things that, you know, Dan asked the chamber is if the town sponsored, paid a sponsor fee. Would we be able to comp Dayton businesses? And so, you know, Chris was fine with that. So. I think also, Dan, she said it was okay to do this year as well, right? So. Yeah, yeah. So, but I don't know if there's a tiered structure or not. I, I know last year, the DDIC sponsored at a $250 rate, right?
Yeah, I'm sure the, the banks and the people who set up tables right there in the reception area were probably sponsoring much more and. At the time, you raised something like between $6,000 to $8,000 in sponsorships to cover all the costs associated with the catering and everything else. Related to it, I believe, last year, so.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I was envisioning, something like, say, you've got a bronze tier, a silver tier, a gold tier and a platinum tier, where you donate $50 and. You're thanked at the beginning. You donate, you know, the silver tier and it's all the way up to, you know, you donate a thousand dollars and we'll display a banner. From our brand new Simply Printables Open in Dayton. And, you know, something to that effect to kind of inject a little bit of gamification to it in a way, because I've noticed that sometimes if. If I ask for a certain amount from somebody who was prepared to give more. Then you only are going to get the amount that you asked for, whereas if you can break it out into tiers where you've got the stretch goal at the top, you may very well get a bank or an institution or a corporation that wants to advertise and. Really wants to stand out as the best in class among the friends of the community. And, you know, you, you miss every shot you don't take, right?
And again, this will be a joint Dayton-Berkley event. I don't think they had a lot of representation last year from Berkeley, but, you know, we'll see what happens this year, so.
Yeah, Chris is from Berkeley, so she really is trying to get Berkeley businesses to, to attend, you know, yeah. Yeah, Chris is from Brick Berkeley, so she really is trying to get Berkeley businesses to to attend, you know, yeah.
Um. So the only thing was, um, and we don't actually have to do this tonight if people want to wait, but, um, the monies to do this will come out of next year's money. So it is dependent upon funding received at town meeting. But to become a sponsor again to the tune of $250 to the October event, um, people are comfortable making that motion tonight so that when it's appropriate time, when when the chamber is ready and, you know, um, we can, uh, and it'll be passed, you know, the, um, town meeting, we can make that donation and become a sponsor.
Yeah, I I think our sponsoring is fantastic idea. I think that's being involved is great. Nobody else has any objections. I'm I'm absolutely amenable to.
To send a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And do I have a second?
I shouldn't probably, should I, you know, should I, um, is it okay if I second? I mean, I'm part of the.
You're a voting member, so, yeah. But John, a second. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
I, I.
Hi.
Right. All right.
We're excited. We're excited for this year's. I'm I'm hoping this year's uh, event is really even more well attended than than last year.
Um, you know, the chamber organized it, put it together, got all the major sponsors, coordinated with Aggie, um, you know, which we're are greatly indebted to. For those who were there there last year while John's here, uh, you have his ear. Is there anything you would do differently, um, from last year that would just help improve it? And I don't know whether that includes the outreach prior to the event or the event itself.
Yes, that that's what I would have done is I, had I been involved with the commission at that point, I would have, um, I would have made more of an effort myself to notify area businesses, try to secure commitment from people, try to follow up before the meeting, um, especially know some that are, you know, perennially in need of help. And, uh, you know, it's a great opportunity to to connect people that are
Right.
job seeking. And, uh, so that's that's something that I I know I would have done a little bit differently is, um, I would have beat the drum among my friends and family a little more than I had.
Okay.
Cause I I found out about it a couple of weeks prior. So I did mention it to people, but I think if I had, uh, uh, done a little bit more of a buildup, then, uh, I probably could have secured a little more commitment to attend.
Okay, good to know.
A good couple of questions. One is, I think the parking was a little bit challenging. Um.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, so the parking on, let me see, would that be the north side of of Center Street is limited? Um, so a lot of people were having to park on the south side of Center Street, um, and then had to cross the street. Um, and I think there were a number of people that weren't sure where they were going. So I think maybe signs could have been a little bit better, uh, that sort of thing. Um, and the other thing I was thinking, uh, Dan, should we consider putting up a poster, um, or something like that in of the town hall? Uh, maybe at the clerk's office or something like that, or maybe on the front door or I don't know, something like that where we might be able to get some, um, you know, some more awareness. Or does anybody know how much those roadside boards cost? Those light up, um, you know, um, roadside things?
There is one right now. It's in front of this building. It's owned or by the, uh, Lions Club, but they're very amenable to town events going on to putting up, um, the notifications on that board. And I think, you know, Raphael is on a committee with, uh, Dave Marvel, who I believe is actually the Dayton Lions person who's in charge of the board itself. So, um, you know, as we get closer to the event, something like September timeframe, you know, we can certainly reach out to Dave as far as someone from Lions and and ask about that. But in terms of just, you know, having some printing done and putting up, you know, posters with, you know, on a foam back that maybe bounces in the lobby of Town Hall or that sort of thing. I can, I doubt that'd be an objection. I can certainly ask Mike about and.
I'd be happy to put one on my counter as well.
Oh, great. And Lenny is.
I have the means to get you a regular sign. Um. It's traditionally at the corner of Center in May. If you want it there. The man, the person who owns that property is a member of the DDIC. Very big of me. So if you want it to happen and Joe is a men, is an agreement, we'll make it happen.
Great.
Okay. Tell me what you want to have on it.
Wonderful.
Okay.
I think it would be great if Joe came.
He was, but he beat himself up a lot last year for not showing up. So especially when I told him there was beer and wine.
If if you would just you know what you wanted to say, then we'll you know, on the on the sign.
Yeah, I, okay. You know, I mean, yeah, sure. Maybe Dan and I can come up with something, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, great.
You know what I'm talking.
Yeah. Uh, anything else about the event, John, that you want to add? Thomas on or? One thing, and I did have to leave early last year because I had to go to planning and there wasn't enough of a quorum if I hadn't shown up. So I had to leave. Did they ever do the student tours that had been promised?
Um, I don't think that they did. Um, I I certainly didn't, uh, take a tour. Um, I don't know if they did have, uh, the ambassadors there. But, um, I'm gonna, I'll make that a a question, um, to see if they can do that again, um, uh, this year. I'll see.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I did have one more question before we move on. Do we happen to know what the largest donation we received was or the largest donation they received? Is that something we could find out?
Um, like from what business you mean?
Yeah, I I, yeah, I'd like to know, like, e- even just the amount, even it wasn't necessarily the business. I'd just like to have just a general idea of what the average contributions looked like. I was, we raised somewhere around eight thousand dollars. So all all, yeah, all in. Um, I'd just like to get an idea of what that looked like. Was it, you know, a multitude of hundred dollar ones? Was it, was there a couple of big fish of, you know, a thousand, two thousand, five thousand? Was was there one of those in there? Uh, I just, I'd be interested to kind of see what the, uh, what the array looked like.
Okay, I'll see if I can get that. That that's not public information, but, um, I'll see if I can get that.
Which appreciated.
Um. The next item I have, um, is discuss review act, the open position for a farming representative. So, um, Lenny had reached out to someone else that he thought might be interested. Unfortunately, she's not going to be able to take that position, mainly for health reasons. And we had struck out with a couple of other people in town, um, including Darlene, who had to resign simply because of time constraints. It's, you know, running a business at least three, if not all four seasons is very time consuming. And, um, so we had talked a little bit last time about possibly reaching out to Southeast Mass Agricultural Partnership. Um, particularly since what we're really interested is somebody who can help guide us on the business side of farming, you know, what are the the things that towns can do differently to encourage and that sort of thing? And, um, I did, after Lenny told me that, um, his contact would not be able to, um, to participate, reach out to them today, left him a message that I would follow up with an email explaining what we're looking for. So I don't know if they're interested. But if it turns out that is something they're interested in doing, um, then we would just have to go to the selectmen and say, are you amenable to changing the composition of the board to include them? Um. Did other? I can wait to hear the care back from the Southeast Mass Partnership and then bring it up at our next meeting. We can vote. Or if people like the idea, we can have a motion that pending their interest, allow me to write a letter to the selectmen asking that we change the composition of the board. And of course, I would just wait until I've had confirmation from CMAP that that is in fact something they're ready and would be interested in doing.
Yeah, I think a contingent situation like that could.
Yep.
Be a efficient use of time.
Uh, just so if they're amenable, I can proceed with a letter to the selectmen.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to please propose a motion that if the agricultural, uh, is it CPAC?
Uh, SEMAP.
SEMAP is not able to provide a member that you please send a letter to the selectmen.
If they are able to buy a number.
Yes, yes.
I will second that.
Okay, John. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. All right. Thank you. Um. The next item was one that, um, Paul had brought up at the last meeting. We were talking about new ideas was, um, cable access channel business spotlights. So, um, the email Paul and I have been in touch with Dave Marshall, Dave Marshall, Dave Marvel and Laura Madeiras from Cable Commission. They both thought it was a great idea. Um, I ran it past Mike Mullen. He saw no issues with it. He thought it was a great idea too. Um. The problem is that both the whole Kable Commission right now is Dave and Laura. And a little bit of editing time from, um, Ron. What's Ron's last name?
Um, sure.
Ron from the Historical Commission, Raphael, let's just forget his last name, but.
Ron Smith.
Ron Smith, probably a member of the Historical Commission. Um, he was helping with a little bit of editing. But they're both very busy. Um, and they have stretched extremely thin right now. So, um, Laura actually was the most excited about it. She has, you know, she has a portable camera like you might have seen at the library um, event recently. She said, oh, we could go out to their business themselves and do filming and interview them there. And, um, so I did offer to them that if this is something they'd be willing to take on, and if the biggest showstopper was editing, that I would be willing to learn editing.
Okay.
I'm not gonna be, not to become an official member of the Cable Commission, which is a taking on more responsibility, but that I could at least, if that's the biggest hurdle. Um, so Dave suggested that perhaps, um, he and Laura and Paul and I meet maybe some Saturday, we can get together and just work out the logistics of how this would work, how many we can accommodate in a month and I'm given their schedule and how often we wanted to do this and how what kind of viewing time, you know, this would all entail, what they would like, what we would like to see on cable. Um. So right now, that's just where it is. Um, so I was thinking if Paul and I can just continue plugging away at that and then come back at the next meeting with some specifics about what we'd like to do and see if everybody's in agreement with it.
Fantastic. I think it's, I think it's great, Dan. Um, one of the things that you might want to consider, I I really appreciate the fact that you, you know, are taking on this additional role. But one of the things you might want to consider is would you, and if you want me to do a little digging on this, I will, um, does, um, Bristol Plymouth or one of the local schools, um, have a video program where we could get potentially an intern to help do this work?
They probably do. Um. I would want to ask Mike if particularly for what we're talking about, this probably would not be an issue. But just for opening up their archives in general, because I don't know what kind of level of access you have to give people. If there's anything, uh, sensitive um, about giving a student, for example, access to the cable commissions, you know.
Yep, yep.
You know, trove of stuff that, you know, might be logistic, might be of issue. I probably not. It's just one of those questions you'd like to ask first.
Sure.
Yeah. But otherwise, yeah, I think it's a, it's a great idea. And it's probably something Dave and Laura have thought about themselves, but I'll I'll check with them. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, yeah, I'm just trying to save you some bandwidth, buddy.
Yeah, no, but I appreciate that. Thank you. Um. I did mention to Dave that Raphael is actually extremely experienced in editing. Um, even so far as doing it on his iPhone. Uh, because he has his own video channel and he does a ton of editing that he does. And we'll see if we can recruit Raphael at some point. Um. The next item to discuss, um, we had, um, a little bit of it came up when Paul, when, um, John and I were talking to people for the last networking event. Um, more of it came up when I was talking to people, getting them, you know, to sign up for the, um, online business directory was a lot of small businesses and this was more so with home-based businesses, but businesses in general. Had questions about the, um, their interactions with the assessors department. The businesses had questions about their interactions with the board of assessors.
Okay.
Um, so Paul had reached out. Well, Paul had reached out to, um, to, um, Bill Moore. Um, and whether it was Bill or somebody else from the assessors department or the board, but have them come in at some future point and do an informational session.
That's why I'm here tonight.
That's why you're here tonight.
I got the copy of the minutes for this and I was away for a few days.
Yeah.
And it happened Friday and when it came back to, no, died on Wednesday, when it came back to life on Friday, some of my files and this email files. So I called in with some back to it and told me that this was on the uh, agenda. And I said, what are we supposed to do? She said, I'm not sure. People said some, uh, uh, right. So what is it looking for from the assessors?
Well, it would actually be sometime down the road next month, sometime later in the summer, at one of our future meetings, um, that we would have one of our meetings here. Probably just kind of let people know so people can attend if they want or via Zoom. Questions about how their business and the section of department work in terms of personal property tax being assessed, their home-based business being, and are there commercial property taxes that get involved? Um, there were just a lot of questions.
Yeah.
I also know from having received information from the assessors department about businesses in town, public information about property tax that are, um, paid, personal property taxes that are paid, that there are a large number of businesses in town that do not pay either. Mainly because they're they're home-based. And they may very well have business certificates, which, you know, they need or their corporations, so they're registered with the state. Um, and all of that may be perfectly as planned, that, you know, they're they're not paying any kind of tax. One person went so far as to say, I'd like to be on the Dayton Business Directive, but I'm afraid it's going to flag me. And I'm gonna have to start paying taxes. It's like, well, I don't, there's no connection between us and them, but if that's your concern, I I mean. So, you know, this is just the kind of, this is a sample of draft questions that we were going to, uh, forward to whether it be Bill or somebody else that came before us down the road. Um, and we wanted to review tonight to see, um, because Bill had asked, we're like, can you give me some draft questions about what you're looking for? And so this was a first stab at that draft. Um. So I don't know if anybody else on the, um, committee had some feedback on this. And I did send out the questions in advance. Or while Nancy's here, if you had, um, wanted to ask some questions of her.
I I thought Neil had a question that
Okay.
had a really good representation of the common question. Thought it was great.
We meet on, uh, this coming, uh, Wednesday is our next meeting. Um, so, uh, certainly I'll get this to Stephanie before then and we'll have copies that the other two board members uh, along with me will have. It's my guess is once the assessments office starts looking at this, we'll have questions for you.
Probably.
And we'll clarify this, what is it looking for, uh, whatever, um. Quick and easy. Uh, biggest personal property taxpayers now in the future. Solar farms. If they own the land on which the solar panels sit, they are tax exempt for panels. So a national grid that plunks solar panels or other solar equipment on national grid property, it's tax exempt. That's what the law says. However, I'm thinking all of our solar farms are currently on or plan for leased property. So the first thing that happens is especially if it's farmland, it comes out of chapter so that the tax rate chapter means that they're playing, they're paying a lesser rate than just playing like we pay as residents. Um. So when acreage comes out of chapter, it's commercial, which is higher. So when acreage comes out of chapter, it's commercial, which is higher than the residential rate. That bill is sent to whoever owns the property. So they're the lessor and then we see is the company that owns all those panels. And when we get into that, some of them are taxed straight out according to value, others are in pilot agreements, payment in lieu of taxes, okay? So even within solar farms, there's a difference in personal property taxes depending on whether or not there is a pilot agreement. So currently we have, um I think we've got two or three pilots that were approved at town meeting and we have other solar farms that are in the process of looking for pilot agreements or have never asked for one. Again, when you're assessing that kind of property, uh it's just not cut and dried. The same, the same companies that do Aquaria and the power plant don't do, do uh solar farms. That's separate. We have, we have assistance from somebody uh who helps us with a lot of tax questions. As far as businesses, um I can think of um one gentleman who does have inventory and his one complaint about taxes, uh personal property tax or the commercial tax, because some communities, I think we know with this one, there's only one tax rate. Everyone pays the same. That's not what Dayton elected to do going back, who knows how long. Uh so I think they'll, I think we'll, we'll be able to answer your questions, but we'll probably have more questions to you so that by the time there's going to be a meeting discussed, we'll all understand what the questions are and what the connections are that other information has to be brought in.
And it's your next meeting?
We're meeting on Wednesday.
Wednesday, what time?
Let me think. It's either nine or nine thirty. Um and the reason I say that is I don't think we're going to have a fence viewers meeting. We usually have that at nine and at nine thirty we have the assessors meeting, but I think that's, if it hasn't already been, it's going to get canceled because we're still waiting for information on our fence viewers case.
That's, that's too bad because I must tell you that the fence viewer meetings are the most entertaining.
Oh, well, they haven't gone away.
I know, okay.
They'll, they'll, and they're not reruns. They'll be back.
Okay, all right, good.
I just wanted to mention something to you. You were talking about sponsors for an event coming up in October?
Yes.
Uh I'm not going to name names, but I would suggest you go to the three hundred anniversary book that I wrote. Look at the list of donors and look at the levels of donations, because there are donors in that book that I wrote letters to and specifically asked if they would be willing to contribute towards our anniversary book. They did it. And some even gave me letters that are published in that book. And these would be outsiders, but they, they've done business within town for years and years. So um you'll see some names today.
Yeah, that's a brilliant.
And levels. I think we had runs, whatever.
Yeah, that's, that's brilliant.
Acoast Bank in North Dayton has a brand new manager.
Yes.
Yes.
Right? And uh Nick Isstisena, I saw him, I met him last week.
Yes.
And he has a bulletin board outside his office in the bank and he wants posters and he wants notification of town events and all of that so that he's, he's wants to get into the community as a community person, kind of like uh Ruby Campus was when he was in North Dayton, joined the Lions Club and everything. But I mentioned it to the Historical Society and said, you need to go in there with your strawberry poster. But any events going on in the town, and I'll mention it to the Lions, I'll just drop one off and it'll, it'll be on that bulletin board. When you walk in, his office is on the left. Side of his office is this bulletin board. So that's a good place to put what you're talking about. That's a pretty busy place. And the other thing is after your all school meeting, I would, I would like to make the name of your drone operator, because that might be something Stormwater can use to inspect our upfalls. We can't do it through the uh school anymore. So, but it's a possibility.
Okay, yeah, she actually, we are her first official customer has a new business, which she stood up after having getting her licensing. But I can send you the information. It's drone, it's Pinnacle Drone Works. Um I believe she is in, I can't remember now what town she lives in. It's nearby, but.
It's middle, Middleborough, maybe, I think.
Middleborough, I believe she's out of Middleborough.
Good thing is, customer is the town of Dayton. So you're one committee in the town, we're another. So the, you know, she might be interested in this.
Yeah.
And it's something that we have to do uh annually or if anything's discovered, obviously after it's tracked, it has to be monitored mostly.
Okay. Yeah, I have her business card and I'll sort forward that to you. I can answer, okay. Okay, anybody have any discussion about the questions to the assessors office? I um will try to attend your Wednesday nine AM meeting, nine thirty meeting. Just so I'm available for any questions you might have from me and. Okay, all right. Some the the next item was discuss review at the Dayton Business Guide, possible updates. Um so I sent a copy of the current business guide, which is kind of um has a lot of information in there. I also sent a copy of the little trifle that I've been talking about that the town of Westford does, which is kind of a quick one start.
Yes.
So I know Mike would be a medal of updates. I know the planning board um has looked at the business side and said they see areas they'd like to expand upon. I know that um Stormwater was mentioned because there have been things changing with Stormwater over the past several years since this guide was written and that they just feel it's kind of upper under, underrepresented in, in the current town business guide that Mike wrote. I guess more of the suggestions about what people would like to see and how you want to proceed in going through this document, looking for, some of it was um presentation, as, as Paul had said, you know, it's very textual, graphical flowchart types, things might help people. Some of it might just be areas that, you know, the information that's contained needs to be updated or expanded upon.
One, you know, one thing I think could be beneficial would be, um I know that um Mike Mullin and a variety of um other folks, who are the building commissioner, conservation agent, a couple of other uh people involved in the various stages of, of planning and development have the um permitting process. I don't know if it's officially a committee or subcommittee or.
Task committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um I wonder if it would be possible if we were to write a letter, not, not requesting to join, but just requesting to, to be present and observe when that is happening, just to kind of maybe absorbed by osmosis, a little bit of the actual way that the permits, the process works from a nuts and bolts perspective. That could possibly be beneficial to see some of the ways that they interface, because I'm trying to view what I feel like would be a good um good mission for the commission as it pertains to the business guide would kind of help to analyze the permitting process from a business development perspective.
Good idea.
Um so if we could just kind of get some, get some eyes on the process while, while real life situations actually work out and get resolved. Um we might be able to, you know, we're, we are coming from a position where, you know, a specific agent or a specific official has their own procedures, their own processes, whereas from the commission's perspective, we're kind of um coming from a place of advocating for, uh for the interest of business, the business, the interest of economic development. It could, um you know, we, we could see opportunities in our permit process that perhaps aren't readily seen. Because we're coming from a different perspective. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah. Yeah, um I did attend one of their meetings in the past and hopefully are going to be on their June meeting, if not their July till then. But that was specific to getting their feedback about potential revisions to um home-based business current bylaws.
Okay.
And we wanted to try to um massage that a little bit, bring it forward to the planning board, but we wanted like Jim and Mike and conservations input first. So we did that back in March. Um then they got very busy with financial planning and upcoming town meeting. And so they said, can you come back to us in June? Um so I was gonna touch base with Mike and say, you know, do you still want me at that June meeting, but I'll also ask him at that point about this. Is there somebody that would be interested in doing that? And if we do have like not just this one event about like, can I, can we talk about home-based businesses, but sitting in as an observer, you know, just what's the process? How does it work? Um I will tell you that they tend to deal with the problem cases. So if everything's permitting fine and smoothly, then they don't talk about it. They talk about the ones that are falling through the cracks that have been are in a loop. They just keep going from committee to committee to committee. They can't seem to get out of it. You know, those kind of things, but um I found it very interesting the one time I went.
Yeah, I'd be happy to attend those, um because I, I deal with all the fifty-three G account, the bond proceed accounts for a lot of these projects anyway, so I'm kind of tangentially involved in on the perimeter of some of this stuff anyway. So for me, I actually might get some uh some especially relevant uh takeaways.
All right, good. All right, so I'll bring that up with um with Mike and see if you, I'm sure we wouldn't have a problem with you just, you know, attending going forward and I mean, it's normally Lisa, Carrie, Jim, uh Health, Mike, um Spelling, Mike Mullin.
Yeah.
And I know from having had events in this room before where we were given a very strict guidelines about bringing food into the building. They do what they want at that meeting. And they meet right here, so. Yeah, you're gonna score some really good.
Oh, that'd be great. Yeah, it'd be going to purely to be flying the wall and kind of.
Um, all right, good. Uh does anybody else have any comments, either just right off the bat about the, the business guidelines and? Yeah.
As we go forward with our discussion with the assessors office, one of the questions and issues that we've had to deal with that isn't on this list is taxing miss mixed use zone businesses. I'm curious, uh many of those are grandfathered in. And, and how the determination. How, how is it determined when it's um what separates private business from a home business? As far as activity, amount of money.
In, in a private home, let's assume there is a accounting business, which is basically in office.
Right.
Or interested with one chair, okay? Uh we have special rules in town that deal with home-based businesses. This goes back quite a while, even before mixed use and all that other stuff. And it's probably why we have so many, if you will, in-home businesses. So you might have a home right here and it's, you know, it's got a, a beauty salon or a accounting business, pick one. Right next to it is a garage that, that fixes vehicles and sells gasoline and, and has uh sells used cars, okay? There is, there is a difference, definitely. And again, that's why we also have two different tax rates. I believe that we would really have to look at, I'm not aware that somebody who has a uh one chair in their house that's part of a salon, that their taxes are any different than the house in which it's located. Now, obviously, as a business expense, if they're claiming it, that's an IRS issue. Okay, whether or not you allocate space and offset the expenses to have in that business, that's a whole nother ballgame, okay? But um the small, the small operations, uh I don't believe they handle the same way as commercial. I haven't seen anybody coming to us for abatements or a business in a home of the type I'm talking about. As a matter of fact, the only commercial I, I, I scribbled some things here. The only let me, let me break this out. Question nine. With the request process, the same for commercial property tax and personal property tax as it is for residential property and excise taxes. So the first thing I think to us, break out the taxes. We have residential real estate, we have commercial real estate, we have personal property taxes and we have excise tax. All separate, okay? The residential, anybody can file for an abatement during the month of January. And it's only the month of January that somebody feels their assessed value. Uh after they get that, that I'll call it the third tax bill of the fiscal year, they can file for an abatement and come before the board and uh that is discussed in executive session, okay? I don't I haven't come to commercial real estate exemption, excuse me, abatements yet, so couldn't tell you how to handle them. Personal property taxes, we have one before us right now, that is a solar farm that's been out for a while. Uh does not have a pilot, wants a pilot. Uh we're working on determining what the taxes would be. Or I think it's the year we're in. Um I gotta be careful what I say, because again, this is executive session, but um we've got to do more research on that. Uh they feel they've been overtaxed, so they present info to the board of assessors. We go through it. Uh we get guidance from the man who looks at our revenue division of local services uh to determine if there is a basis for the request. So there's a lot to it. It's just um abatements, um I'm really cut and dried. Every single case is different and you really have to look at it. We had a request for a residential abatement and we said um Mrs. Taylor, I'll actually do a physical inspection of the property uh based on her knowledge of how things are assessed in the town, uh the look at other properties, because you always have to look at comparable properties if there are any. Um so that, that's one of the ones we're looking at, that she did make the visit. She came back and reported to us, but we haven't issued a final decision uh on that yet. Um excise taxes, those are easy per se, because we're going to say um when did you turn the car in? When did you take the car off the road? When did you junk it? When did you sell it? And you'd have all that documentation, because you're going to deal with the registry. So all of these tax things, we have to keep all separate. So when we talk to you, as I said, that question nine's got a lot of stuff in it and I've already pulled out four that I'm looking at, that we'll be able to explain to you uh what happens, uh procedurally what happens um with, with abatements and exemptions. And we, we expect a lot of exemptions. This is a whole new ballgame. Because we have uh recalculated the uh amount of uh income assets that can be exempted and has increased substantially. You, as you know, Mr. Hall, we have talked about this for a bit. And the uh level of assets had not been updated literally for years. So that has been done. The uh amount of assets you can have, which does not include your home, the dollar value of the assets that you can have and ask for an exemption is substantially increased. So we're expecting we're going to see that coming up in the next year, okay? The year starts July the first for the new asset numbers. That's just, that's just an aside. But um it's, it's not that complicated, but when you talk taxes, everyone says, oh, I get this tax and I get, and we all do it. The tax is coming out of our ears, but from an assesser standpoint, now we're breaking down, we'll be able to tell you that.
Hey, the next item was um correspondence, the only correspondence I received was from the town clerk. He does send me periodically or as he gets some um new um business certificates. So um and that is the three that I listed earlier in the meeting with the three new businesses. Um public input?
I actually have one, but I don't know. I actually have one, but I don't know. Um, Saturday. Was the birthday of. One Connection. The Cannabis Dispensary on Williams Street. Um. They last year. In lieu of taxes. Gave us twenty-five thousand dollars. Well, this year. In lieu of taxes. They. Um. Handed. The. Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator Mullin. A check for thirty-five thousand dollars, which represents about three percent of their profit margin. Um, it's good to see new businesses. Doing well in the town. And. The town is also very thankful. For that thirty-five thousand dollars, which will go to um public safety. Whether it be police, fire, EMS, or the ambulance service. We still haven't determined that. Where that money will be allocated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? Um, the next item is approval of the minutes for April twenty-fourth. Um, if anyone's had a chance to look at that, I'll, in a motion to approve those.
Mr. Chairman, I I believe. You'll need to amend your motion, I mean, your uh minutes. Uh, the Bristol County Agricultural High School. At five PM.
At the time we s- had our meeting last week, we stated it as four PM, so the minutes actually reflect what we said. It, the information is incorrect, however. Oh, I don't want to change it because.
Okay.
That we said four o'clock. We just have to make sure that going forward, when we start advertising this, we correctly say five o'clock.
Well, what we do in these minutes, I would you point out that since the original. Minutes were approved at whatever date that means. You have received a correction and now these minutes will be like new timing.
Well, in in this writing, in the minutes for today. Um, I will update to say that the. Time has been corrected. It's not five PM, that's four PM, right?
But you don't have to expect that you're going to approve now.
Right, correct, yeah. Um, thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve the uh minutes from um April.
Okay, any discussion? Did you have a point to make or?
No, no, I'd like to second. I was like. You're beating me to the motion.
That's fair. Um, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, the next item is set the next meeting date, so sticking with the fourth Monday of the month at six PM, that would bring us up to June twenty-sixth. Um, we are headed into the summer months. I don't know if that starts to complicate things for people. Uh, we do only meet once a month, however. Um. Some committees take summer hiatuses. We did not do that last summer. Um. But um, you know, I still think we have a lot of balls for juggling right now, so I wouldn't recommend doing that myself. Um, but if somebody wants to make a motion to for the June twenty-sixth meeting as our next meeting?
I would like to make a motion that we set our next meeting for the evening of Monday, June twenty-sixth at six PM.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, next would be it taking a motion for adjournment. Um, anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
John? Oh, Paul beat you, okay. John, you want to second that?
Sure, I'll second it.
Alright, so I have a motion for adjournment. I have seven twenty PM. Alright, um. So we'll be signing off cable. Thank you very much for attending.
Oh, aye.
Aye?
So do we, do we vote?
Oh, oh, I said, oh, okay. Every. For all those in favor adjournment?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
Have a good night, Rob.
Good night. Thank you.
You know.
Right.
Bye-bye.